Anybody hear me?
Yes, Rick.
Good, thank you.
Sound check here. Can you guys hear me?
Martin.
Here Cathy.
Join the meeting.
Hello.
Hey Marty.
Hey, and I discovered how, everyone should know, I discovered how to mute so you won't hear me coughing, breathing, blowing my nose, making obscene noises. You may once in a while hear a flush because I enjoy doing that, but other than that, I'll mute myself.
No, don't do it, don't do it.
Well, when I have something to say, um, okay, just let me know, because I got a call from Tim Hammett that I'll address in a minute.
Chris, is that vodka?
Huh?
I think Chris.
Smart vodka.
Smart vodka, is that like a smartphone? It numbs your mind until you go to sleep staring into nothing?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
I don't drink much, but you know, every other Monday, it really makes me want to drink sometimes, so.
Well, yeah, there are other consumables that I consume. So, have at it, whatever makes these, these, you know, your contribution is well taken, no matter what shape you're in, as are all of yours.
Thank you, Marty.
My pleasure.
Does he know that's whose approval you were really looking for?
My whole life.
I don't need no stinking approval.
Sarah, looks like they're making great progress on your new addition.
Yes, siree, Bob, Chris.
There's a lot of rocks there.
All sorts, all sorts of prizes.
Anything, any, you know, did anyone find Jimmy Hoffa or Judge Crater or?
No, no, but there was a sort of an arm and a leg bone found and a.
Now we know what happened to Bruce. Quick, hide them. Throw him in the creek before anyone, you know, looks for him. Oh lordy. Thank you for that opening.
I don't see Sam yet. Am I missing him?
I do not see him yet as well.
Okay.
Did anyone get bills?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, it's no big deal. I trust you guys. I'll vote I in advance. How's that? Kind of like poker. I won't look at my hole cards.
You guys, soon we'll, we'll just get things started if Sam doesn't come on frequently.
Hi, Miss Sarah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Tammy, and Sam says he's trying to get in now.
Okay.
Tammy, I didn't mean to cut you off. Did you have something else to say?
No, I was just having problems. I had to switch devices, so I wanted to make sure you could hear me.
Yep, yep, you're good.
All right.
What kind of devices did you switch from and to? I'm curious.
I don't even know. I'm back on my computer.
Oh, I was, yeah.
I could not hear anybody on the other one.
It's not always a bad thing.
Did log the bills I sent out?
I did not. I was just asking about that, but like I said, you don't have to. I trust everyone and I vote I in absentia. Or recuse myself, whichever one you prefer.
And send them to the board at Silver Plume.
I haven't received bills or an agenda. If you could send those over really quickly.
Yeah, I got an agenda, but that's okay.
I didn't receive, Tammy had to resend them to me. I didn't receive them on the little Chromebook. I received Sarah saying thank you.
Join the meeting.
But I didn't receive them originally from Tammy. We sent them. I don't know if it's a Chromebook thing or what went on there.
I sent them to board at Silver Plume.
That's why I still haven't been able to get logged into my board email yet.
Chris, I just forwarded to you.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate it.
To your old, your own email.
Yeah, like I said, I received Sarah's response, but I didn't receive the original. And then Tammy, everything else you've sent to the board, I've received. It's kind of weird. I just didn't get the important one.
I had the same problem, Kathy. Sarah had to reforward them to me where I'd gotten responses and then not the original.
Yeah, that's weird. And it says at the top, board bounce.
Yeah.
I can.
Sarah, I don't have a remote connection to my desktop, so could you send those to everyone for me, please?
Uh, sure, you mean, yeah, the agenda email, okay.
And the bills, if, did you read the bills?
I did, yeah.
So, can I say something real quick before?
Please.
Regarding the emails that are missing or what have you?
Please.
Um, if you're getting them when you use, so, uh, Sam was been, I guess, doing a lot of work. Sam and Sarah have been doing a lot of work with the lawyers about getting us into conformity with our communications and what have you. And, um, so I'm not sure what the best way to get everybody to use the town email is. I'm not the mayor, I'm not the boss. But if you send from, um, an outside email, it's, you're not automatically permissioned to post to that board without an approval. So, it can be approved, which is not a problem, but, um, if you, but it's going to, it's going to be delayed as opposed to if you send it from your town email. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I've seen that, but this one came from Tammy, and like Sarah received it, and it says from board dash bounce, Town of Silver Plume, on behalf of Clerk at Silver Plume. You know what the board dash bounces?
Yeah, the bounce is when it rejects it because it's sitting, so I can, I could probably go in right now and go, oh, okay, there's your, there's that email that you're talking about, and, and it's coming, it's because it's coming from a unknown email. And I think, um, because we haven't had the board on town emails before, we have to kind of iron that process out. A couple of meetings ago, Tam, uh, Sam had asked if everybody's going to start using that email, and it didn't happen, probably because I don't think a lot of people are set up on it yet. So, um, I'm happy to help anybody set up that you don't have to use the Chromebook. It's just a tool to have, because we needed to make sure everybody had it, um, for our COVID response. But if you have a personal computer or a phone or what have you, um, anybody can contact me and we'll set up the meeting and we'll set up all those devices so that you can access what you need to access. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I sent you an email like three weeks ago. I tried to log in under the credentials that came, you know, on the Gmail piece of paper that you sent out with the passwords and everything. They kept saying where that was on that piece of paper was incorrect, so I haven't been able to. I sent you an email and I just never got a response back. I didn't know what was going on with it.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't get an email, but if you could, uh, send me a text message and you want me to come and set that up for you, I'm happy to do that. That's like, it, for the most part, it could take me 20 minutes. If you have many, many devices, it can take me up to an hour.
So I can't just put that password in that login?
You should be able to, um, I, I might, I don't, so, those passwords were generated and then they were printed on your paper for you. So, I don't have them, but so what we could do is probably go through a password reset thing where you can reset your password anyway. So, um, if we go through that process, then we know that whatever password you're using is the password that we're putting in.
Cool, I'll try to redo it tonight and see if maybe something else is wrong. I'll let you know.
Okay. It, it, um, it set up the mail server setup for IMAP. So if you guys are using an iPhone or an Android, when you add an account, it's, you know, it asks you, is it Gmail, Hotmail, Yahoo, or whatever? Um, and if it's not, either does, and it's add another account, and it's an IMAP account, which I don't have explicit instructions for, but I could print those up potentially. It, it would probably just be easier to help people through it. So, if anybody, and there's only seven people. It's not like we're a corporation with 200 users, so I'm happy to go around and set the five more up that we set up.
Yeah, and, and you guys, it took me and Tay, uh, like, I don't know, five to 10 minutes at, at most to set up my phone, my personal computer and the Chrome. Really, no time at all. And she wasn't here. It was pretty straightforward.
Okay, if we're done with this, can everybody hear me? I apologize for being a little late here. I was having trouble getting logged in.
I can hear you. Can anyone hear me or did I just mute myself?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, I unmuted then. Good, thank you.
Sam, before you start, could we have the caller who is called in on six one seven, um, seven nine seven zero three five four, identify themselves with their first and last name?
That's a Massachusetts.
I think it's, that's Sam Alviani from Bread Bar.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay.
All right, it's called, yeah.
She likes being anonymous.
Hey, Sam, where in Massachusetts?
No, I'm actually in upstate New York right now. I will be in Massachusetts on Wednesday.
With six one seven, where, where in Massachusetts?
Oh, where am I from? Yeah, I'm from Newton, Massachusetts.
Oh, my dad was born in New, well, no, he's born in Gloucester in the shadow of the fishermen, that he grew up in Newton.
That's so funny. I feel like everyone has someone who grew up in Newton.
Right, right. I'll shut up now, Sam.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order at seven fifteen. Um, take a, a roll call. Is everybody here? I don't see Frank. Um.
Let's see Frank.
I think everybody's here but Frank.
Yeah, looks like it. Okay, everybody's present but Frank. Um, how about a motion to approve the agenda? Anybody have anything to add to the agenda?
Yeah, I do. Uh, excuse me, pardon me. I just got a call from Tim Hammett. People still, for some reason, think we're doing a food bank, and out of the kindness of their heart are feeding the bears, which result in significant impact on the residents of the east end of Main Street. So, and I know it, it's going to be bad timing, but if someone could put a big ass sign out there on the door, thank you for your kindness, but the bears are doing fine, or something to their, tell them not to leave food there anymore and thereby, uh, although the rest of us probably are grateful because they're not coming to our houses. Um, but it would be an act of kindness and diligence in our part to mitigate that, uh, situation tonight, if possible, someone would be willing to put a sign up there.
Okay, do we need to add that to the agenda or did we just?
Oh, no. Oh, no, I think that, you know, as long as we get it, you know, as long as it gets done, no, we don't have to add it. I just wanted to get that in, uh, because I got the call about, oh, a half hour ago, just before the meeting, so, and, uh.
Sam?
Yeah.
This is Rick. Um, I don't know if I need to be in this meeting at all. I'm just wondering if you think you will get to the topic tonight of setting up the short-term rental task force. No, we're not going to get that to, tonight. I need to touch base with you in person and we need to have a discussion about that before we bring it to the board.
All right, well, give me a call when you're ready.
Okay, I'll do that.
See you all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the agenda?
I do.
Okay, Kathy?
Um, in the last meeting, and it's actually in the minutes, um, I want to talk about putting together a list of what we have for rules in the park. And then we can put that with possibly with Sign Engine stuff. And then, um, we have an email about the bid on the drywall. Maybe talk about that for a little bit. Um, and then Tammy sent us a thing on the state historical, that letter. If we could talk about that for just a second too.
Okay, I must have missed the emails because I didn't get either one of those.
The bid for the drywall came in right after our last meeting, the, two meetings ago, I think, after we chose who's going to be the riffra. And I think it's the other guy is Sean, and he put in a bid to do the drywall on the inside of the town hall. And I was just curious as to what's going on with that. So if we could just add that for later on down the line.
Okay, why don't I just answer that for you right now? That, that bid was for the purpose of giving to Sursa to get our payment from Sursa for the insurance. Um, our town maintenance person is going to do the drywall works. She should be starting on it here in a day or two. Is that?
Do you want to go?
For your discussion?
Society letter real quick, do you?
No, I, I think we should probably talk to the bread bar stuff, and shouldn't we get on with the agenda before we go off on the sidebars?
Yes, we can do that. I'll cover it under, under administrative items.
Thank you, Tammy.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So is there technically any amendments to the agenda?
Just the park rules. I'd like to go over those.
Yeah, park rules.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Um, let's see, bill payment. No, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Do we have any public comment? Anybody from the public have anything to comment about?
I, I'm curious as to when we, you said that we're going to set, um, this is Tae Graham, by the way. You said that we're going to set a a meeting after you speak with Rick for the short-term rental. Will there be an announcement, like the committee? Will there be an announcement for the committee like there was for the resolution?
Yeah, well, that'll probably be a part of the agenda for the next board meeting.
Oh, okay, so it will be on the agenda of a board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay. Um, how about bill payment? Did everybody get a chance to look at the bills?
Yeah, I just got them. Give me a sec.
I move to approve the bills as presented.
Second.
And you, real quick, um, we wanted to see if we could add the bill from the folks who helped with cutting down the tree. Um, by Earl and Susan. Um, I mean, were you able to send that around?
I did not receive a bill.
Probably not.
Through the tree.
Okay, I want to send that, okay.
I got your email just before the meeting. Um, what is it, thirteen hundred and fifty dollars?
I'm, I'm having trouble hearing Sarah. Is anybody else?
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing her too.
Let me mute, see if that helps.
Sarah, you're not coming through. We just can't hear you at all. Listen to it. Can't hear Sarah. I'll, I'll tell you what I know about it.
Having trouble hearing me?
Can't hear you at all.
You can't hear Sarah?
No.
Can you just say who the bill should be made out to and the amount?
Okay, do you have that readily handy? Can you guys hear me again?
I do have the bill handy. It, and I can send you a copy of it, Tammy. Um, the, it went to, um, the Town of Silver Plume. Um, sorry, I have it sort of handy. I believe it's Dan Murphy Tree Removal is the name of the company. it's Dan Murphy Tree Removal is the name of the company. Um, and it's thirteen, thir- one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. But I can, I can forward this invoice to Tammy, too. I just wanted to make, it got stuck in the spam email, so I wanted to make sure that it got presented because he just, he called me and reminded me today for that, asked me where that was going.
Okay, if you can forward that on to Tammy, um, we'll just add that to the list of bills to be paid. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the bills as amended?
Move to pay the bills as amended.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? All right, motion carries, bills will be paid. Um. Administrative items and mayor and committee reports. Um, Tammy, I'll let you go on that.
Um, the letter from the State Historical Society is for your utility building at the CDOT parking lot. You're being notified to submit comments on how the development will affect the historic district. So I sent it out to board at Town of Silverplume, and I need you all to just take a look at it and think about your comments that we need to get in. Uh, there's a date on the letter with the deadline.
August twelfth.
Yeah, so it'll be coming up pretty quick. And then, uh, the erosion, the corrosion control treatment program, I didn't know if we had discussed that on the last agenda, but that grant program was approved for you. So the paperwork will start this year and probably go into next year. I'm not sure what the timeline is for the program. And then, uh, I will have to get you my update when I get it finished. Essentially, I have been nothing, doing nothing new, just trying to keep up and get things caught up and work with the auditor on his requests every day. So if you have questions, I can answer them.
Okay. Um. Approval of the minutes for July thirteenth? Did everybody get the minutes in the email?
Yep.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the thirteenth?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Approval of minutes for the July twentieth special meeting. Anybody have any? Okay, go ahead, Marty.
Move to approve. I like that. That's a great phrase. It's lyrical. Move to approve.
Yeah.
That could be our motto for the town board.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and ju- just so everybody knows, uh, the reason that was moved to the beginning of the agenda was that was at Tammy's request. She wanted to get, start getting that stuff out of the way at the beginning of the agenda instead, or, you know, instead of the end. So that's why we're doing that now instead of waiting until the last thing.
Thank you.
Hey, Sam, can you hear me?
Yeah, kind of.
Um, in future, can we do both the, um, the administrative clerk report and the public works at the beginning? Because I think it was similar rationale. Essentially, we've been having long meetings and, um, leaving those reports to the very end. Often, people are ready to get off, and we don't really give those reports the the credit and time they're due. So can I just suggest that from the next agenda?
Yes. Tammy, can you make that change, too?
Yes, I will. Did she, did she want to do it now?
Um, well, it's on the agenda at the end for this. So for this one, we'll keep it that way, and we'll change it on the next one.
Okay.
All right, um, looks like that takes us into new business action items. Um, number one, resolution number twenty twenty oh five, a resolution establishing changes for water and sewer service for users in the town of Silverplume, Colorado, beginning July first, twenty twenty. Tammy, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, and, uh, I apologize for not getting it done earlier. I had to meet with Mary at Georgetown, and she just got the numbers together. It's actually your increase every year for your sewer base rate, and this year it's a dollar twenty-five. And it's the debt service on the project that you had with Georgetown in twenty thirteen. So every year it goes up just a little bit, and that covers the bill that you pay to Georgetown for wastewater treatment. So everyone's water sewer bill for the month of July will be forty-eight dollars on the water side. And if you don't use any water, the base rate is sixty-seven twenty-five. Currently, it's forty-eight and sixty-six. So if there are any questions or anyone would like to have a copy, it's the exact same resolution that we've had, uh, since twenty thirteen. And the only thing that changed is the rate for sewer and the date, of course.
Okay, Kathy, did you have a question?
That's what I was curious of this document is the only thing that changed on it was in twenty-two A where it says residential sixty-seven twenty-five?
Yes, the paragraph just below that.
Oh, in the sewage. Okay.
There's a half rate for sewage if you happen to own a sewer tap, uh, along with the water tap.
So that point zero zero three seven five is a dollar?
That's the rate that you all pay for sewage treatment. So when your bill is for a hundred gallons of water, you're charged for a hundred gallons of sewer. So it would be a hundred times point zero zero three seven five. It's a, a third of a cent per gallon.
So the three seven five went up a little bit along with the sixty-seven twenty-five?
No, it did not.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's the rate that you pay for the sewer. Uh, the only thing that's going up is the base EQR rate.
Which is the sixty-six, the sixty-seven twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions?
Helpful, Tammy, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this was interesting reading.
It's a short one.
Yeah, thank goodness.
You're deflected, Kathy.
Okay, I'm sorry, I lost my audio for a minute. Where are we at?
So we just want to move to accept the the ordinance change on the water?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We accept resolution twenty twenty dash zero five.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second.
Sarah?
Thank you.
Am I la- am I on or off?
You're on.
You're on. You accept it?
Oh, yeah. You betcha. What am I, what's my choice?
Just had Tammy change it so that you're paying all of our increases, not just yours.
Hey, since I'm being charged for a hundred gallons of sewer, if anyone wants it, they can come up to my house and take a dump as long as I'm not home, just so I get my money's worth.
Okay, number two on the agenda, the Green Solution LLC, application for change to Columbia Care Board of Directors, and finding a suitability for new temporary LLC. Do we have somebody from the Green Solution here?
Sam, I don't see anybody here. And, uh, I did run this by Rick Caldwell on Thursday. Let me try to explain it the best I can.
Okay, hang on just a second, Tammy.
Okay.
Um, Sarah, can you take over for just a minute while we're going through this? I gotta step away to my other computer and print something out that I need for the next thing on the agenda.
Sure, sure.
All right, thank you.
Don't worry, please. That'll be great.
Do you want?
Tammy, yeah, it's all yours.
Okay, the, uh, the lawyers that did the change to beneficial owner that we approved back in, uh, the earlier part of the year. They've had one change to the board of directors. And then they said that they need to form a temporary LLC which will be wholly owned by Columbia Care and say it will share the same controlling beneficial owners. They need to form this temporary LLC to close their deal. And then I guess it will be formed as a temporary LLC and then will be dissolved after the closing. This is all very explicitly explained in their application to the state. They simply have to file their application with the local authority, and there is no action that you need to take on it. We just need to acknowledge that we received it and send it on back to her so she can send it in with her application. So.
Great. Tammy, so no, no motion necessary, but but perhaps if people have questions, we want to try to address them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so so anybody have a, oh, Sasha, go ahead.
Um.
Join the meeting.
Wanted to, uh, this is all what they said when they were at the last meeting, right?
Yes.
There's nothing different about this. This is just the next step in the process that they explained to us.
That's correct. I believe the only change was that in the amount of time that's gone by since that took place, they've had a change in the board of directors. So his information is all provided on the, uh, application.
Okay, that's all I wanted to check. Thank you.
Great. Other, first of all, welcome, Frank.
Hi, Frank.
Other, other questions, folks? Kathy, anybody else have questions on this?
Sasha just asked my question, so that was great.
Perfect.
Mind reading.
So so if there are no more questions, then I think all we need to do is move on to the next agenda topic. Tammy, thank you so much for that.
Correct. Thank you.
So it looks to me like, uh, TJ Blueback is our next candidate here to talk about , uh, community planning strategies, uh, update and new letter of engagement. TJ, are you with us? TJ, are you with us? Okay.
Did you give the email from TJ?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I I think we did. Did anybody not receive that email?
What was it? What was it really about? I don't remember it.
Yeah.
It was an update and letter of engagement for this year.
And and so, Tammy, we don't anticipate TJ to provide us an overview there?
I don't think so, but I think he talked to Sam. So we may.
Sam took time off to get the other computer which has that data was what I pers- what I.
Oh, that's right, Marty, you're good, you're good. So maybe we, Sam, are you back and up and running?
I'm back, yes. Where are we at?
We're ready, we're ready for the TJ discussion.
Okay, um. Uh, have an update from TJ. He's been working on trying to find grants for us. Um, he was working on trying to find one for the roof of the town hall, which we no longer need. So he he changed his his focus to working on, and I have a a letter of engagement here that if we agree on, I will sign it and and send it back to him. Um, the projects that he's working on is the road rail replacement plan that we talked to him about that was already on his list. And I had asked him, and I told you about it a few meetings ago, to try and find this money for the water meter replacement. Um, he's looking for funding. I believe he, I believe he knows where to get them from. He's just waiting for our approval on this to actually apply for it. Um. If. Let's see, let me get, I'm just kind of skimming through it. Most of it is exactly the same as the last letter of engagement that we gave him except for the changes in the, um, projects that he's working on. So the.
Yeah, Sam, I I just forwarded the correspondence with TJ onto everybody.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
So what it comes down to is his estimate for task one, which is research and coordination, um, reach out to the various funding agencies to discuss the project objectives, funding options, program schedule, and program requirements, present initial findings to the board of trustees, miscellaneous follow-up coordination with town staff and funding agencies to refine scopes or project objectives as may be necessary to meet program objectives, present findings to the town board, and reprioritize projects based on cost value added and available resources. For for task one, his cost estimate is six hundred and eighty dollars. For task two, which is write and submit applications, reveal, review and fill out grant applications for identified projects, gather community and stakeholder letters of support if needed, fill out forms and develop consent for application, attend board meetings to discuss final grant applications prior to submission as needed, submit grant applications for two funding agencies, provide application forms and supplemental documents to the town for the records. And his cost estimate on that is three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. And for task number three, post-submital coordination, follow up with funding agencies on status of review, represent the town in phone calls, presentations, and other follow-up with the funding agencies through the evaluation and award process, continually coordinate and provide updates on discussions and representations to the town. Upon a notification of successful grant awards, CPS will assist the town in developing RFPs, soliciting bids, or otherwise procuring the award, awarded equipment or service. His estimate for that is two thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars for a total of seven thousand one hundred and forty dollars. And Sarah said that she forwarded that to you so you can read the entire thing. I just skimmed over what I thought were the important points. I'd like to to get the board's approval to sign that and send it back to him.
Yeah, I have an addendum maybe to that, just or something to inform me, a form of those, uh, in in this venue. I spoke to Harry about peeps and the town maybe coming up with a way we can try and save the church, since we all have a a mutual interest in that, uh, in that building. Uh, and I suggested that he get ahold of TJ if he would like to just put a blurb, uh, if, and I'll remind Harry as is will be, of course, necessary. Um, but you might want to give him a heads up or however you want to handle it or do it in a separate, uh, communication.
I'll probably give him a call about that tomorrow and just give him a heads up on it.
What's wrong with the church? We need to save the church. We need to save the church?
Yeah, we do, if you look at a wood shake roof, if you, when you go in there, when you go in there, if you look at the ceiling, there are an increasing number of water spots and cracks. Um, the chimney in that building, and I keep saying and trying to get people together to coordinate it, needs cleaning, hasn't been cleaning in, uh, maybe three-digit years. Um, yeah, no, and, and it needs to be painted, now I think that Chuck included the painting part of it in, in his chore list. Um, so that, yeah, there's a lot of stuff, there's, yeah, so, uh, lots of stuff. And there are plans, there is a small stipend or fund for maintenance that the former owners gave to either the town or to peeps, so we could probably use, and it, we'd need a lot more than that.
We need more weddings.
More what?
More weddings, we need to advertise it more as a wedding venue.
That's.
That doesn't work.
You know, that's peeps and, uh, I mean, they, they certainly would welcome any suggestions, so if you have ideas how to increase revenue or increase business at the church, um, yeah, get ahold of peeps, talk to Harry or somebody else who's involved with peeps and maybe we can get a little bit more of a contribution because even with grants, there may be a matching fund.
Yeah, that'd be cool, okay.
I'd like to move to accept TJ's letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carried. Alright, the next thing on the agenda is the Bread Bar, and I see we have some representatives here from the Bread Bar. Before I turn it over to them, I'd like to just give you a, a little overview. I've had, had conversations with them about, um, them being able to, to host private events at the Bread Bar in order to have a little bit of income. They, like everybody else, it's been closed down by the COVID or hurting and, and need to generate a little revenue. So I had a conversation with Dr. Tim Ryan, uh, the county's new public health director, um, about if and how they could do this. And he sent me some information that I forwarded on to the folks from the Bread Bar as to the social distancing calculator and the requirements. I'd asked them to come up with a, a plan, a written plan on, on how they can meet all the requirements, which they were supposed to send to me, but I didn't get. But, um, he, Tim Ryan basically said that, that town could, could approve it if we approve of their plan. Um, he asked that if we did do it, that we have them submit a plan for each individual event and that we take them on a case-by-case basis. And we, if we approve it, we forward the information on to him, just so he knows what's going on. That being said, that's the research that I put into it, I will turn it over to whoever wants to speak for the Bread Bar.
Thanks Sam, this is Rob, um, and I might actually kick it over to Casey or Steve who's done it, but we appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity, I think Sam covered it well, we, um, I think first and foremost, you know, want, um, oh, good call Steve. First and foremost, want, uh, um, to keep the town safe, um, I think that's why we've stayed closed as long as we have, um, and I think like everybody are just starting to feel the pinch a little bit more, um, and are getting to a point where kind of hitting, hitting our payments is gonna get pretty difficult, so we put together this plan sort of in that spirit of trying to figure out a way to keep everybody safe, bringing enough money to sort of cover what we're trying to do and make sure that we're, we're here after all this. Yeah, and so just thank, wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity and, and for taking the time to work with us on this so that we can, can kind of come up with a solution, so. Casey, I don't know if you want to kind of go over the details a little bit, um, and some of the specifics?
Yeah, let me, let me pull that up real quick.
And since we have a written plan, it just took us a while, so we'll send it to everybody after this.
Yeah, so it's written, so, you know, I, I guess I can either share it, present it, but I don't think anybody wants to look at a boring word document, but we've gotten written, we've got it written, so I can kind of just rapid fire through that with you guys real quick, just kind of like a couple of the points that are like whatever the state's mandating for the safer at home pieces. Is that what's best? Do you guys want to go through that?
Yeah, head on the highlights of your plan and, and then when you get an email it out to.
Yeah, you got it, um, so I think the big pieces for us is just for bars, uh, they need to adapt to operate like a restaurant. So with our social or our package, it's gonna include like a full food service, all provided by Long Eye Pie. I think if you guys have been to the bar before, you've had their pies, sweet and savory, which will be awesome, so that'll be a full food service. Um, the other big piece is making sure that we've got all of our tables just in six feet apart, we've kind of like re, kind of revamped our indoor and outdoor spacing, and for these packages, we're only doing 25 patrons, so that definitely is um, under what the, or yeah, won't be over the required capacity there. Um, and then we'll be under 50% of our indoor capacity as well for this new plan. Um, the next part is just that we're gonna be removing all of our bar seating, that's a big piece that the state requires for safer at home. Um, and we're gonna be putting a protective covering at, at the top of the bar, which would be really nice for our employees who'll be bartending, um, that will likely be just Rob and Steve and I, so that'll be good. Um, and then there's a few other pieces, I think the one big piece is that if there is a confirmed case of COVID that we have all the right people to connect with and, and contact, so we've got the Clear, Clear Creek County's number, um, we'll coordinate next steps with them. And then I think a couple additional pieces that we talked about as owners, just that we really wanted to make sure we're covered, were that all Bread Bar guests must wear, um, hold on one second, um, that they must wear masks, um, and so basically we'll make sure everyone's masked up before, uh, like when people are received at the bar, so we'll walk them to their tables and make sure that they have their masks on whenever they're not seated. Um, we'll also make sure that all of our employees are doing screening for onsite and other records for symptoms. Um, it's gonna be a rule for us that all employees are wearing masks at all time. Um, unless of course that there's some sort of task that allows them to be six feet away, but I doubt that at our, at our bar. And then the big piece, we're kind of just writing up a big like parking plan and communicating with anybody that books us that they have to park and stay within like close proximity to the bar. Um, I think that's a big piece that can be pretty annoying for everybody else, just when people start wandering around and, I don't know, kind of doing their thing in town, so. Unlike being able to go from the coffee shop to the bar to this and that, we're just gonna tell everybody like they must park right next to the bar and wear their mask, um, and if they don't, then they'll be asked to leave. Um, so I can send all that over, you know, I think a lot of it was just based off of or encouraged by different practices and policies. Um, I know a bunch of us kind of work within different bars and restaurants, a lot of like crazy safety precautions that, uh, bars in Denver are working on, so I've been able to see a lot, and we're, we're planning on doing a lot of that as well, but I don't know, the overarching plan for us is that it's gonna be private events, so there's no like surprise, I wonder how many people are gonna come today, or if we're gonna be over capacity, or, you know, for us, like the only two people show up or anything, so it's gonna be only if people book for the full package, and that'll be max 25 people for four hours, but that's the extreme amount, and my guess is that'll be more like, I don't know, 10 people any given day. So, sorry to bore you on this.
That's alright. Sarah, did you have a question?
No, this is significant, it's not boring, appreciate your time.
Yeah.
To share it with us and.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely Casey. The, um, yeah, Sam, thanks, I was just, I, I had heard a little bit about this, look first, you guys sent her around an email sometime, not too long ago.
July 4th.
What are your current thoughts about, um, uh, where you're gonna place tables? Oh, sorry, what? Can you not hear me? Can you hear me?
We can, I think you're asking where we're gonna place tables, is that correct?
I, I was gonna say, yeah, can you hear me now, Rob?
Yep.
Yes, that's, that's what I was trying to ask, are you asking for, um, allowance to put tables in front of the building? That we should be considering?
Um, that wasn't really part of our plan, I think our goal was to keep it smaller and just kind of use our back, you know, our main patio and then the, you know, the little section that kind of goes down, and we might clear that out for some, um, some area, but if we're able to, I mean, there might be the possibility that we're gonna have a little bit bigger, and if we're able to have that flexibility, maybe we could have some sort of written process or get in touch with Sam to say like this is the day that we'll do it.
Well, yeah, and this is Steve, just to chime in real quick, I, I think generally speaking, with what we envision things to be, we're not gonna need that, but um, my, and then, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the state is deferring to the town and cities, and if they want to allow people to like be in the street and stuff to allow for social distancing, so. I, I mean, i- if we can get that, that variance, I think it would be helpful, because then we could just, you know, maximize the space and make, not, not in terms of maximizing the amount of people, but maximizing the space between people. Um, so we, we can have people in the parking area, we could have people, you know, at a, at a table in front if we need to. But like, like Casey was saying, I don't know that we need to, but if it does require a formal vote, it might be helpful to do it so that we have the flexibility. Um, if people want more space.
I, I believe, I believe that what you need to do to do that, and Tammy probably knows better than I, than I do, um, but my understanding is you have to apply for a, an admin, amendment to your seating area to include those areas, your parking lot or, or, um, you'd mentioned the lot down below. Um, so that needs to be put into an application to the town and we'd have to have a, I believe, a public hearing on that. Tammy, um, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct, you have to get a temporary modification of your premises, which does have to go through the local authority and then on to the state, so.
And, and the state is fast-tracking them, they, they've sent out a, a memo a few months ago, back when I was first starting about, starting to talk about reopening things. Um, outlining the, the process and the fact that they was fast-tracking those type of applications, so if you want to do that, we, we can certainly consider that.
Yeah, that makes sense, we'll work on that.
Yeah, we'll get that over to you the next couple of days then.
Okay, one thing that I would like to see in your plan that I didn't hear you mention is your, um, sanitizing procedures.
Or the bodies.
How, how often you'll clean your restroom, um, how you'll sanitize the tables after everybody gets done. That, that needs to be a, a part of the written plan. And, um, tonight, I think we can, we can approve the concept, but each individual event that you, um, are gonna book, we need to have notification of that and be able to consider them on an individual basis, and that's by guidelines from the county public health director.
Are you, are you saying that for every time that we're open, we need to send that in? I don't know if that's.
For, for each, each special event, um.
Well, I, we're not really doing spe- like, we're not doing special events or like.
Weddings or whatever.
That's how we're marketing it, I guess? There should be a distinction there, like, we're essentially just trying to limit the number of people that come in. You know, we're packaging it up more just so we don't have like a ton of people drive up to, to Silver Plume or overbook it where we're at too much capacity and people, send people back to Denver wherever they're hanging out from, so I think we've been using more of like it's a package deal. So if we go over what our current plan is, like if it's gonna be a bigger function or something like that, which we're considering, we're just trying to figure out what we might do, we can definitely submit that to you, but I think what we're trying to set up is that it's the same kind of setup every, every time. Like max 25 people for four hours.
Okay, we, we'll still need notification of that if we do, do approve this, just a minute Sasha, I'll get right to you. And just so, just so we're all clear on this, right now, by the governor's public health order, you're not allowed to be open as a bar. Um, what we're going, what we're going under are the, the small event venues, um, or, order, the order for the small event venues, so as long as it's, uh, you know, a private event or you mentioned weddings and stuff like that, you're fine, but to open the bar as a bar to the public, you can't do that right now.
So, yeah, I think that's a good point, Sam, but our understanding is, um, that bars can't operate as a bar unless they operate essentially as a restaurant, meaning table service and they serve meals. And so, the, our, we wrote our plan to abide by the safer at home order for bars and restaurants. If we were like a nightclub that didn't serve food and we didn't have, you know, seating areas, then we wouldn't be able to be open, but our understanding, and maybe we're wrong, we should talk about this more, but our understanding is that uh, as, as long as people are seated and we serve meals, um, then, then it's, we're considered a restaurant and we're, we're allowed to be open like normal hours as long as we do all of the other safer at home, uh, sanitizing and things like that. So, so it's not really a private event, we're just calling it that so that we don't ever have more than 25 people show up. Um, because otherwise, if we just say we're gonna be open like normal, we never really know how many people will show up on a given Saturday. And that's the, the like mystery that we want to take out of the equation, we just want to say this Saturday, we know we have a small little birthday party with 10 people, and that's it, and anybody else who shows up gets turned away. But we're still planning to operate like we normally do.
You're talking about a, uh, an event where people are invited, you're not just open, opening your door.
Yeah, it's by reservation.
Saying whoever come in.
Yeah.
Okay, and as far as opening as a bar, even doing business as a restaurant, um, and again, I'll refer to Tammy on this, I, I think that requires a different type of, of license, I think you have to have a restaurant liquor license to be able to open as a, a bar under those, and I don't know what it would take to, to change your license to that. Um, Tammy, am I correct on that?
I'll have to look at the regulations, I'm, I'm not familiar with them.
We, we already, we should already have the, the correct license for that.
Yeah.
They have a tavern license.
We have a tavern license which allows us to, and we've gotten inspected by the health department to serve meals and food and stuff.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clear that up, Sasha, I'm sorry that it took so long to get to you, but go ahead.
Sarah was actually first.
Oh, Sasha, after you, I've already said, um, and then I'd love to have a minute.
Okay. Um, so I just would like to slightly clarify, I think there's some confusion over, um, how they're allowed to operate and, I mean, I would always defer to Rebecca Abrahamsen, she is who is in charge of the county and helping businesses make sure that they are meeting all of the rules by the state, county and the municipalities. Um, but the way that they are planning on operating is by a reservation-only basis, which is completely allowed under the current guidelines, it does not mean that they're special events. It's the maximum of restricting customers in their space. Um, and so they are operating correctly under their license with an outside party catering. Um, and operating fully as a reservation-only restaurant, it's not a special event. If they were to have a special event, that would be a separate consideration, but if they say that these are. But if they say that these are our posted hours, that we are available on a reservation basis, they are operating as a tavern under our licensing within the within the allowable limits of the county.
Well, that's that's not what my discussion with the county public health director was, and I believe that's the department that's in charge of it, but um we'll go with that. Sarah?
Thanks, Sam. Just a quick one. If you guys decide to work on that lower area below your current outdoor seating, that you may recall that there's that wonderful old brick oven that's buried in there in the side underneath, I think, part of where you've got your existing exterior um porch. Um, and it would just be cool not to destroy that and to maybe just use it as a feature when you
Yeah.
work on expanding that area.
So I appreciate it. I think it would be cool to keep that as well. Um. I've had a conversation with the county historical department. I've had a couple of conversations with the state. They both came out. Um, you know, I tried very hard not to talk poorly of Brady and Shay. Um, in this instance, they pretty much did away with that. Um, there was very little left when we got it. So the, you know, the historical society of the state and and the county kinda came and take a look, take, took a look and and there's like not much we can do with it, unfortunately. Um, yeah, so we won't further destroy anything, but like, we got it and it was pretty much in shambles.
Got it. Yeah, Rob, sorry.
I wish, I mean, we would have loved.
Yeah, I know, it's, we love, we would love to do something with it or re-re refurbish it. But but we definitely won't um have people or seating or anything near it. It'll be just on that flat area, if anything. Um, so so, yeah, it it won't get further harmed, but it might not be a pizza oven anytime soon.
I thank you for, no, it's all, it's your decision. I am so sorry to hear it was destroyed.
Yeah, we were bummed.
It's all yours.
The reason we looked into it was to like restore it, to use it, you know, we wanted to have pizza up there, we wanted to do stuff with it. And they kinda said it wasn't wasn't worth it.
Okay, Kathy?
Um, this is totally a sidebar. If you guys are ever able to do takeout food from your food thing, that would be a wonderful thing to advertise, and I'm sure a whole bunch of people in the town of Silver Plume would do takeout from your tavern.
One thing that we could do, so we're doing the pie companies bringing everything up. We could set up a separate kind of like ordering setup if people wanted to order in advance and pick up on Friday or something like that with us. Might be kinda cool.
That would be cool.
I think that.
Nothing to do with anything that we're voting on, but that would be cool.
Which brings up sort of another question. Sam and I chatted about a little. I think you know, with this reservation system, it would allow us the flexibility to do a locals' night if people want it. Um, I mean, you guys have worked hard um to keep stuff safe. I wouldn't wanna put anything at jeopardy, but we could kinda be closed to anybody from the outside. Um, you know, I'm happy to to chat with Lily Olivia to see if they could work, so it'd kinda be fully contained. Sasha might be able to jump in if if neither of those two are free. Um, but, you know, we could, you know, monthly or whatever would make sense, um, find a way to do that as well.
Sasha?
Um, one other quick question. If you do have the um when you are open, does that then allow you to be open for the takeout cocktails and takeout food? I'm not very clear on that part of the.
Yeah. It it would, um, it it would allow us to do that. We don't necessarily have plans to unless um uh, unless that's a special request from the board of trustees. But but no, uh, I think it would legally allow us to do the to-go alcohol and whatnot, but um you know, we 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 obviously will only be open if someone reserves us. So we probably won't be open like, you know, nine to five every day kinda thing, which is what that would likely require to, for people to know when we're there to to do to-go cocktails.
And we can definitely send like an update of the schedule, like, I don't know, on a Wednesday or something like that, and just give you guys a heads up of what to expect if we're not booked, but we're only looking really at Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I'd be surprised if we're booked any other days during the weekdays, but we can obviously like let everybody know if that's kinda like an anomaly booking.
If if we do a approve you to be able to do this, I I would request that you let me know by, say, Thursday, um, what your plans are for the weekend and how many people you you expect. Um, and the reason for that is because that's what the county health director requested from me, is that I let him know, so he knows what's going on in the county.
No problem. Um, that's fine. Um, we'll we'll do that. Um, I know, I think it's just a little bit different in the sense of we're not doing special events, we're just operating as give you guys a heads up, no problem.
Yeah, I still need to that.
You got it.
I need I need to keep him informed, because the more informed he is about what what's going on in town, uh better position we're gonna be in all the way around. So any more questions, comment?
Yeah, I got it. Am I on or off? I keep forgetting.
You're on.
Okay, a couple of things. I hate to follow up the takeout food section of this discussion and talk about, um, are you gonna stick a porta potty or two there?
I don't.
We don't plans to, no.
Yeah, we don't. But we do have, uh, we'll shoot over our safety protocol on however.
That's great.
Yeah, and you know, most of these groups will be smaller than we would have on a typical weekend. Bathroom kinda serves serves them.
Okay, uh, and then, uh, first of all, bless you, Sarah, for bringing that up, but I, yeah, I was, I saw that a couple a while back, and I appreciate the fact that you may be trying to restore it and uh, you guys have been good neighbors, so I appreciate that also. Next thing is, um, the dumpster by the side, as you know, you, I don't know where the earth's beginning, but we have or, and I'm sure you're aware of, that we have significant earth sign population. And while I enjoy them, there are a lot of consequences in terms of trash removal. So that dumpster that's there, I'd like to see maybe make an arrangement to get a secure dumpster on the east side of your building. Um, because I would assume that it's gonna be, and to be alliterative, particularly pungent. Uh, and those cans are really good, but it deter- and we got a big ass bear here, and a determined big ass bear will compromise those, uh, um, bear resistant cans. So that's that's pretty much, uh, my input.
Yeah, well, let's look into it and see what we can can find. I mean, any recommendations would be great, too.
Do you guys wanna help?
Yeah, they got them over there.
They've got them.
Yeah, we've requested.
I think we've, I think we've requested, but that's okay.
Yeah, they um are really good about billing us and not great about any sort of service requests we have of them, so.
There's a new ownership there. I mean, when we had the food bank, they they stopped and just said, as long as those cans are out there, they're gonna stop and pick them up. So they, it historically, they've been, uh, a real pain in the poopy aki, but uh, right now, I I I think that they're trying to establish a more reliable image, harmonious relationship, whatever. Uh, with it. So I think that's something that can be.
Yeah, we we definitely share the concern.
Join the meeting.
We 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 definitely wanna make sure our our bins are secure and and bear proof. Um, but, you know, it maybe, it might be something to talk about at a future meeting, um, but we we have made so many requests of Timberline and um, not only do they not, e- even recently, not only do they not give us bins of our requests, but they almost, they they rarely actually pick up our trash recycling. Um, so there's like, our recycling bin is currently full and has been for like four or five months. Uh, but we haven't been filling it, so we haven't really been too worried. But uh, we we share the concern, so if there's anything we can do in partnership with the town to make our requests a little more salient with them, that would be.
And along that line, Sam and I or myself, depending upon a mutual availability or having a discussion with other issues, and certainly, um, we would be glad to support that request and maybe add our weight to the requests you've made to work that out, and we'd be glad to help.
Great.
Help you guys out just real quick. You're not technically getting free service anyways. You're bill, you're paying for your trash service to begin with.
Yeah.
There is a new company up here, uh, Doyle Disposal. And they've got high reviews and they've got bear-proof dumpsters and nice shiny new stuff, and they answer the phone, and I would honestly tell you guys to probably give them a call. They're a very local company. They're out of Dumont, Colorado, and they're a lot more serviceable.
I concur with that. Thank you, Chris. I really agree. That's an excellent suggestion.
It's definitely an option, and a lot of people have been going that way. I think the train is actually already went with Doyle. Um, yeah, so it's definitely something to look into.
Thanks. Any other questions?
No questions, no comment?
So are you going to be submitting your written plan for approval at the next?
Yeah, we can submit that, um, probably tomorrow. Uh, and and we'll we'll send along whatever guidelines we receive from the state, um, Sam, so if you if you want those, uh for any further discussions, you have the county or whatever, if if it clears anything up, but we'll send you the plan and and everything in there that you requested. Um, I don't know if you wanna do preliminary approval today based on that plan, but but we we can get it to you, um, probably tomorrow.
Okay, um. Somebody wanna move that we, uh, approve them to move forward?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Wait, wait, Sam. Sam, this is Frank. I have a question. I would like to have that motion clarified. What does move forward mean?
Um. Well, they're gonna send us a copy of their of their plan and if the plan meets all the requirements, then go ahead and start taking reservations and and doing it.
Uh, I would suggest that we wait until we see the plan. None of us have seen it. And it seems like there's so many details that have to be cleared with, uh, with the county that it doesn't sound like they have consulted with the county at all. So that I think we're a little premature on on approving anything.
I have, I have, I have consulted with the county and been given given permission from the county public health director, Dr. Tim Ryan, to, for the board to be able to approve this if it if it meets the requirements, which he sent me a copy of the requirements. And my plan is, and my plan is, when I get the plan from them, I'm gonna forward that on to to Dr. Ryan and have him look it over and make sure that I'm not missing anything.
I I understand all that, Sam, cuz you went through, I think you've done great work. And you have done great work coun- consulting with the county. It sounds like there's so many discrepancies between what we just heard as a plan with what the county may require. I I would be hesitant to approve anything at this time except to say it sounds like they're working on it, but I don't think we need, should approve anything until we see a plan and get to review it. Uh, cuz I don't wanna give them false hopes that, hey, it's all hunky-dory with the town right now, and then it turns out that there, you know, there's some violation somewhere in the county stuff, which the county, as we all know, the county has the authority to be more uh, restrictive than the state regulations. But it, so it sounds like then these, it sounds to me like there needs to be more coordination between you, cuz you seem to be the main contact with the county a- and 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 the operators of the bread bar, uh, to produce a plan that they know will will meet the county requirements. So, well, that's that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, my comment to that would be, um, I really don't want to make them have to wait another two weeks for an answer. What what I would like to see us do is take a vote and approve it on the condition that their written plan, when I get it, I forward it on to the county health director and when I get an okay from him saying that it meets all the requirements, then they have permission to open. Kathy, did you have something you wanted to say?
Um, we do have an email from July, I wanna say fourteenth, that spells out part of this. And besides the part that you brought up, Sam, about the the cleaning thing and everything, I think we do have enough to do exactly what you just suggested.
Well, so if there, it, I, when, Sam, when you uh, send out, uh, the results of your you talk with, uh, the, uh, health department, if you would be so kind as to let us know in case so we're more comfortable with it.
Absolutely, I'll let the whole board know.
Thank you.
Who who made that motion?
I did, I think, but that was a long time ago.
Okay, would you care to amend the motion to what I just said about the approval from the county health director?
So moved, including that last part.
Okay. Sasha, you seconded?
Yeah.
Do you second this now, the with the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, wait a minute, Sam. If you would hold on, you're 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 stifling disgusting here. Uh, I just wanna make it clear uh, for those who can't see me, cuz I'm only on my phone. Um, my main concern, of course, is the health and safety of everyone involved. Whether it's the town residents, whether it's the owners and operators of the bread bar and the customers of the bread bar. And I wanna make it clear, that's my concern. It's not, I have nothing against, you know, what's going on. I'm, uh, but I still wanna make the point that I think we need to see their plan. Sam has to review that plan with the, uh, with the county and and before we give an approval of it. So again, that's my comment at this point. Thank you.
Okay, I think I got a vote from everybody, but Frank, does anybody wanna change their vote?
Uh, Sam, Sam, I didn't vote yet. I I share I share Sam's process concerns, and it's not just process. I, you know, I I have trouble voting on something I haven't seen yet. Um, I I it's no reflection, you guys, on nice presentation. Kathy, I appreciate the notes they sent us as well. But, um, and I I suspect I wouldn't have any issue at all, but the idea of voting, you know, for something. the idea of voting, you know, for something that we haven't seen doesn't make any sense to me also. So, Sam, I'm just being, uh, uh, you know, just being negative.
We're not voting.
I still have the, the table.
One more.
We're not voting for something that we haven't seen yet. We're voting, we're voting to let the county health director make the decision for us, which I think is a good plan.
I, I think it advocates the role of the board. I, and, you know, of course, we would want, I, I just have a difference of opinion, Sam. I tend to agree with Sam. That's all.
One more.
Kathy?
Can we, um, when you get the, the letter from these fine people and you get it through the county, can we have kind of like a, a brief notice, quick Zoom call to review it? As we've been having special meetings all over the place, can we have one that, you know, almost like that day? So we can get these guys back in business as promptly as we can?
You need at least twenty-four hours to post a special meeting.
That sounds pretty good to me.
Yeah, and we also, Tammy, we, we lose your assistance after what time? Because of vacation.
I will be available to do a Zoom meeting. Not going to the beach, I'll be right here in Georgetown.
I would, I would really not like to have another over this. I think we, uh, we will have control if we don't like the plan, even if the health department likes it. We certainly can make that part of our decision-making process. I would never abdicate to anyone, even the big cheeto, our responsibility to act on behalf of this, of the citizens and other people as well. So how, you know, how, health and safety is something that we would have an opportunity to.
Right.
Right now, I think we can let them go ahead with the plan and present it to the health department to get their ruling, recommendation, whatever, and then act upon that as part of what, as part of our information, utilize that, I'm sorry, as part of our information to act. We're not giving them blanket, I don't think, uh, at this point to do, to do anything.
What I, what I understand, Marty, I, I appreciate that and Kathy, I, I support your proposal. I understand that we're all fried on far too many Zoom meetings. Um, we all do them in our own days of work and then we do them for the town, town as well, or many of us do that. Um, I don't agree with you, Marty. I think we're leaving this up to Sam and the county as opposed to a board opportunity to have a voice. And it's more principle to me. I don't like this approach. I don't think it's appropriate. Um, and so I'm, I'm not gonna support it. So
Oh, that's, yeah, that's.
I'm only one board member. It, you know, Samuel, call a vote. I'm only one board member. Doesn't matter. You know, you guys will carry it.
Sasha?
Sam, go ahead. I, I think I'm, maybe Frank and I are the only ones that won't.
Do you guys have any prospects in the next two weeks?
No. Yeah, well, so we, we haven't, uh, started telling anybody we're gonna do this because we were waiting for this meeting. So, so we haven't booked anything because of, we were planning on tell, you know, send an email to our list, going on Facebook tomorrow, but, but we haven't actually advertised.
So, in the interest of understanding more what other board members are feeling, I do agree that we should see the plan before we say to go directly ahead with it. Do you feel as a business that if you have to wait for the county health inspector and for us to have another meeting, that that is extremely financially cumbersome?
Well, it, I guess the, the, i- if we, I, it, it's not the end of the world, but, but if we, I, I don't think we feel comfortable advertising until we know that we're getting the, the green light, right? So I think that would put us out, two weeks out from, you know, uh, promoting, uh, not just from, from booking something. But, but just the, the other thing I just wanted to say real quick is that I, I think there, I think a lot of this is a result of confusion around the private event versus just opening under the state guidelines. And, and like, our plan will essentially, the, the state guidelines direct how a business like ours can and should open. And our plan is just gonna be in total accordance with those state guidelines. Um, it won't be in accordance with private event guidelines because that's not really what we're doing. We're just calling them private events so that we don't have random people showing up into town. Um, but, but we're just gonna operate just like the restaurants and breweries in Georgetown operate. Um, so we'll, we'll have the same, our plan will be in accordance with all the practices everybody else in the county is already doing. That's, that's currently open. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I'd just like to add one more thing. I, I fully promise that if I find anything objectionable in the plan or if any board member finds anything objectional to the plan and we deal with it in the next regular meeting, I will fully support those objections and I will certainly express those objections. So, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to, to keep this thing going on, but, um, I just want to make that assurance that, that it, this is not saying, okay, do what you want to do on, at least, and, and, and anyone. I, I don't know about anyone, but on my part or, and certainly on, uh, Sarah and Frank's part, so. That's it.
Okay, is that all the discussion? Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Let's vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion doesn't carry. Um, sorry, folks, give, give me the plan as soon as you can and I'll get it to the county health director and we'll put you on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, and, and Sam, I, I fully support what Kathy suggested if others are willing to do, uh, a more urgent special meeting.
Yeah, I'm talking about like a five-minute special meeting, not, you know, not a forty-five-minute one. If we can get it at a time and everything, we can just review it, have the meeting, basically vote.
Mm-hmm.
You know, call the meeting.
I would do it this week if we can get it all lined out and out there and everybody to look at it. I'm okay with doing it by Wednesday or Thursday.
Uh, we already have a meeting on Wednesday.
So Thursday.
And I'm working Thursday.
Well, as soon as they get it to me, I'll get it to the county health director and it'll be whenever he can answer us. Soon as I get an answer, I'll let you know and send his response out to everybody and we'll go from there.
And I, you know, fully, if I can't make it because I'm working when everyone wants to have the meeting, I certainly want to just say I support whatever this board decides and whatever action they take.
Well, with the twenty-four hour, um, process, we should be able to, you know, plenty of time for most of us to be there.
Well, also, I would like to say that I think five minutes is a very Pollyannaish view of the interactive process which this board engages in due to our dedication to doing and not acting precipitously.
Okay, so we need five minutes. I'll get on the call. Five minutes to start the meeting.
No, I don't need to hear it explained. I just, you know, I mean, I just think that five minutes is, that just is never gonna happen in one of these. In my opinion, of course.
Hell, we can't all get our minds in five minutes.
We can't even get, yeah, I was gonna say, we can't even get the technology together in five minutes.
I need to know if Frank voted and if so, what did he vote?
Aye. Was that a question?
Yes, how did you vote?
Aye.
Would you restate the question, please? I'm having real trouble hearing you guys.
Did you vote on that motion? And if so, which way did you vote?
I voted no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are we done?
Yes.
All right. Get that to me as soon as you can and I'll, if you can get it to me by tomorrow morning, I can get it to him tomorrow morning and hopefully we can get it done soon.
Sam, can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Sure.
Just, just to clarify, we're gonna send you a plan on, on bars and restaurants.
Yes.
Those guidelines, not the private events that you were first referring to, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the rea, the reason that I had to send private events was because of the way that you guys presented it to me to start with. Um, you mentioned weddings and, and private gatherings and that's what I went on.
Right, but.
And I didn't realize that you already had the, the proper license to be able to open as a, as a restaurant. Um, so that's, that's why there was the confusion there.
Okay.
So, so we understand each other now and that's why it'll be presented.
Okay, thanks.
So just out of curiosity, because now it's bugging me, the pie country company and their savory and sweet, is this sort of a Sweeney Todd-type food?
I'm not legally allowed to answer that.
I think that's very smart.
All right, Marty, you're up next with the finding and.
Yeah.
Go on.
Yeah, well, we, you and I covered part of that, the barricades and, uh, but I just want to make it, it really clear that, uh, we should be prepared for something like the, uh, Fall Truck Fire Festival that Georgetown seems to be holding a few times every year. And, uh, be ready to put up official-looking barricades and, and signs uh, to that effect that, you know, stay the hell away, but in a more politically correct way. Um, and, uh, it's very important because the people have been paying attention, the customers have been paying attention at the coffee place to not park through the corner if there was some fucking knucklehead who parked right at the corner on Silver Street. And I forget, one of our citizens, one of our board members informed me that that is a designated fire lane, Silver Street. And we have sufficient signs, at least on the floor of the dump truck when I used it that one time, to post it in a very visible manner. And I would really like to see that done, uh, as soon as possible, just in case, uh, someone who's neurologically, psychologically, and, uh, ethically, uh, challenged takes that course of action again. Um, and as far as the beer container, not beer, but bear, uh, containers, we're dealing with that or, you know, that, that was not, I must have misspoke, but I meant, one thing I want to make sure is that we have a functioning Sander this winter and I'd like to open that discussion or authorization, whatever the hell we gotta do, because another winter without a Sander is not acceptable to me personally. That's it.
Any more discussion on that? Sasha?
So, this is, I don't know what this is a comment on necessarily, but the, before last, Olivia was walking her dogs and heard a loud noise. The door to the bear-proof trash can flew open and the bear climbed out of it.
I love it.
He got in there?
Yeah, he was, he was inside the trash can. He had opened the door, closed it very politely behind himself, unlike the residents tend to. Um, and then climbed back out as she was walking the dogs at a quarter to midnight.
Was that the, uh, can, the, the, the plastic rubber, whatever can, or was that the dumpster itself?
The town dumpster.
Yeah, the clip has to be put back in order for the door to not be opened again.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a little bit of diligence.
It would have been really unfortunate if, um, somebody would have happened to have clicked the bear in there. It would have sucked the person taking out your trash in the morning.
Or been the one who opened it up to throw your trash in.
Yeah, you gotta close it. I've closed it on several occasions where people were too tired from lifting their heavy burden of household trash into the dumpster to actually slide the door closed and put the chain on. So that, you know, maybe we put another sign that says, you know, hey, come on, it isn't that hard. Close the fucking door and put the chain on. Something, or something more politically correct, as I need editing.
In our ongoing conversations about this, there's also the part of people suck sometimes. Bears will get into trash cans. Um, so asking for it to be a requirement in a lot of ways is sort of asinine. I know that we're all trying and we all want it to be better, but, um, there's also a level of, we just have to deal with it. The bears were here first.
Well, we can try and remind people in a gentle way that, hey, you know, some knucklehead is gonna eventually call, uh, those agencies which will make a shoddy attempt to remove the bear and end up with a dead bear, number one. And two, we can hope, all we can do is try. I agree with you, Sasha, totally. We can only act in the best manner we perceive of and pursue that course, which we consider the correct, moral, pragmatic, et cetera, way. And maybe adding a little sign, come on, folks, you know, it isn't that hard or something to that effect. It'll help maybe one out of five and that'll be one less opportunity. Which reminds me, because if we do, do we have a volunteer to put that sign up, stop leaving food here, but thank you anyway?
Yeah, I'll go do it. We're done, Marty.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Okay, is that all the discussion?
So Marty, are you gonna put the sign on the bear dumpster? Because yours worked really well last year on our bear dumpster. It started being hooked again.
Um, I would ask somebody who does a really big, better job than me writing a sign, uh, Ms. Businich, to make this wonderful sign that, to that effect, if you would be so kind and I would be more than happy to install it. We can make that a collective effort of this august body of governmental government.
I'm, I'm more than happy to do that, Marty.
Thank you, ma'am. Just let me know when it's done and I'll get it up there.
Thank you, Sasha.
Is it all? Okay.
I'd like to add that that Sander issue be addressed at the next hand, down board meeting. Also, that's, that would be, that was why I brought it up to get, not, not, not tonight, of course, but at some point in the near future, in the near, in the reasonably near future, so we're not faced with cataclysmic events and old people falling and breaking their other hip, which isn't titanium on the ice. Not to mention anybody's name.
All right.
August Kent.
Got it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, the next. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, it's come to my attention that we've seated a new board and haven't had any board training yet. Which was my fault. I had hoped that by now we would've been doing in-person meetings, and I thought board training would be better done in person. Obviously, that hasn't happened, and don't look like it's gonna happen anytime soon. So Sarah and I have talked to Barbara and Joe about doing board training, and it's something that needs to be done on a night that is not a regular board meeting night. Uh, we need the entire time to be focused on training. So I'm looking for dates that we can suggest to Joe and Barbara, as to when everybody would be available to do this.
Maybe on an off Monday, that's not a town board meeting. The first or third Monday of a month.
Yeah. We, we suggested that to them, and I think they have a conflict with Monday night. So it would be another night that they prefer.
Could I suggest sending out a doodle poll for the next three weeks? Um, instead of sitting here trying to debate our schedules, then people can just say when they're available, and we do our best to pick the day that everybody can be there.
I would go along with that, if you know how to do that, because I don't.
Yes, I do.
If you wouldn't mind taking that on, and I would prefer that we don't stretch it out over three weeks. I'd prefer that we do it over a week. That should give plenty of time for people to look over their schedules, and then we can get it to Joe and Barbara and get it scheduled.
Um, my, I, I know that I am not available for an extra meeting for two weeks.
Okay.
That's why I said to suggest dates over the next three weeks. I have just, it's a very busy couple of weeks for me.
Okay, then run the, the, the poll for two weeks, and everybody can keep that in mind, and we won't go for the next two weeks, but I'd like to get it done as soon as we can.
And Sasha, do you want, maybe we just add Barbara and Joe to that doodle poll? So do you want their emails? Do you have them?
I think I have them on emails from them to the board.
Okay, okay.
All right.
If not, I, I will ask.
Sounds good.
And while you're doing it, why don't you add it on there that, a date for Barbara and Joe, and then another date that we could suggest to Sersa, to see if they'll do some training with us.
Okay, they'll have to be two separate ones.
You can just add that as a question to-
Not easily. I feel like it gets confusing for people.
Okay.
So can we just tell Sasha, Sam, seven to nine on the, the nights that are not Monday, Sunday, and, and, uh, Saturday?
Or Wednesday and Thursday, when I work. Cut our limits it down to Tuesday, don't it?
So we're looking at a Tuesday, Friday from seven to nine. Is that where we're at?
Yeah.
That's where we're at.
Okay.
And the last Tuesday, I have a advocates meeting, so that kinda narrows it. That should make it pretty easy to figure out when.
Okay, so can I interject here?
Yeah.
I have an email for you from Sersa with all links to your board trainings. And I also have CML packets for each of you from the municipal league. So if each one of you could make arrangements to pick it up, or I can bring it to you tomorrow, you could have a chance to look that over. You could visit the links on the letter that I can send you, and then you can be better prepared when we do have that meeting.
Okay, and does the CML do board training too?
Yes, it's the same as the Sersa training.
Okay, then by the same person?
Yeah, so you'll have physical, uh, documents that you can refer to, and you'll have a video link if you prefer to do it on the computer. And then if you, at the end of your Sersa trainings, if you could print out your certificates, we can get points for doing the board training.
Okay, so is the Sersa training something that we would do as a group, or something that you can watch individually?
You can do it individually. And then that, that might make the meeting with Joe and Barbara go a little faster.
Sorry, to clarify, you guys, can you just restate that? Did we just hear that the Sersa-
We lost you, Sarah. I think we lost you completely. Sarah, we didn't hear a word that you said.
Okay. Sorry. Can you hear me now?
For now, yeah.
I'm, I'm really sorry. I'll, I'll ask the question another time.
Okay. Or you could text it to me, and I'll ask it. Thank you, Sasha. Okay. Um, do we wanna go ahead with the poll, or now that we know that we only have Tuesdays and Fridays, should we just pick a date in early August? And send that on to Joe and Barbara and see what they say?
I, I mean, I guess with the Thursday, Friday thing in mind, um, I would choose the fourth or the eleventh of August.
Okay.
And see if that's agreeable to Barbara and Joe.
We can send them both of those dates and let them choose.
I can't do it the eleventh.
Okay, then we'll send them the fourth. Anybody can't do it on the fourth? Okay, we'll send, we'll send the fourth and see what they say and go from there. And I will let everybody know what their answer is. Okay. What do I do with the agenda? Just a minute. COVID-19 update, um, the state numbers are, are going up every day. Um, uh, we've been told in our, our county meeting that the, the governor and the state health department is very concerned. They're already talking about, um, localized stay-at-home orders coming up if things don't level off. Um, the, the county at the last meeting last Wednesday had two confirmed working cases. All of the rest of them that had been positive are done. They had two, two active cases. Um, one of them was a gentleman who they had caught it somewhere out of state on vacation, and when he come back, he proceeded to party everywhere in, he could, in Idaho Springs, so they ended up testing over a hundred people through his contact tracing. Last I heard, they hadn't got the results back from that. Um, so it's not looking good as far as I'm concerned, but, um, hopefully it'll stay away. Um, we're working on putting together, uh, business grant program. Um, I think we're into the final stages of that. I think one more meeting, and we should have that put together and ready to finalize and, and take applications um, to help local businesses out from the effects of COVID. There's three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars available in the fund for that. It'll be dispersed among cap, uh, businesses in the county. Sasha, do you have anything to add?
Not right now. Uh, I think we've got another meeting coming up. There's another, um, there's another, um, transportation meeting coming up, which I don't know if this necessarily falls under the COVID-19 update, but, um, there's, um, some availability of, uh, getting some signage from the state for the frontage road and from, um, the west end of Main Street um, to replace the signs we used to have saying no frontage access and stuff like that. Um, to help us with um, closing down roads and things like that. Uh, so that's really all I've got.
And I almost forgot, one of the most important things. I've arranged with the county public health for them to come to Silver, Silver Plume to do testing. Um, I believe the date for that is August fourth. Um, she's supposed to be sending me some, um, posters and flyers to put out, and I'd like everybody to tell everybody that you know about it, and when, when I get the, the signs and stuff, I'll email them to you, and if you could forward that email to anybody in town that you know, know of, I wanna do everything I can to get the word out. Um, it's free testing. You have to call ahead and make an appointment. It'll be drive-up testing. It'll be done in front of the town hall. Um, that's all the details I can think of right now. As soon as I get the, the information from her, I'll get it sent out to you.
Speaking of getting word out, uh, just everyone hopefully noticed that we now have finally gotten the prospector in town. The railroad, uh, has, Sam reminded me, cause it slipped my mind too, I was kinda aware that they will accommodate citizens from this end of the railroad and back up, provided it's not a sellout. Is that correct, Sam?
Yeah, um, what the, what the plan is, is anybody from Silver Plume, um, and you'll have to show proof that you're a resident of Silver Plume. Um, you can go down on the first train and come back on the last train. If someone wants to go to Georgetown to do shopping or whatever, and, and wants to use, utilize the train for that purpose, it's available to citizens of Silver Plume for no charge.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and, uh, so the purpose is getting the word out. I think everyone needs to know, and it goes to, I don't know whether we, I just missed Tammy's update, but I'd like to see a modification of the water bill system where it goes in an envelope, and I'd be happy to do a little just couple of blurb newsletters, and I promise no politic, politicizing or vitriol in it, saying, hey, the, the, the prospectors here, and as an example, I know it's a little bit late. But just to make sure that everyone, um, gets, gets that word, and I think because most people get a, uh, either a virtual bill, water bill, or a postcard water bill. Postcards really are not a, a proper medium for dispensing anything other than the, the bill itself. So if we can figure out a way to stick everything in an envelope that they need to know about, uh, and get it out to all citizens, including resident, non-present residents, so they will be informed of, of things that, uh, they may need to be informed on. So, so let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting as to how to, to do that, if we could.
Okay, Sasha had her hand up first, and then Sarah, you're next. Go ahead, Sasha.
Um, mine was just a quick recommendation that maybe, um, for ease of traffic, the COVID testing could happen in front of large town hall, where there's a little bit more space as opposed to in front of small town hall.
We could probably make that work.
That's all.
Okay, Sarah?
Yeah, just, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, so, so my, picking up on Marty, your suggestion about better use of water sewer bills, which I always support. I think we should also be driving people to use the new website. And I think we should have a ready email distribution system. And I know Tammy's been working on that, but I, I don't think we, we should rely on monthly communication for, you know, certainly selected types of, um, uh, community awareness building, et cetera, and engagement, so, um, I just, Tammy, this is another call for us to really get that email address listing, um, up and running, um, or some other listserv or something else so that we're able to get ahold of people quickly and not have to wait to the monthly water sewer bill. So, uh, if I could just add that, Marty, to that agenda item.
It's a great idea. We could promote it in the monthly letter, and I'm not being flippant about it. I'm not. I mean, I think we could, along with, you know, hey, the bus is here, yada, yada, yada. There's a meeting about, you know, whether to open a tannery in town or not, um, it was a website that you can utilize, et cetera. Please access that and keep yourself informed. An informed citizenry is a strong citizenry by gum, uh, something like that in, in a mailing.
I think that's a fine idea. Okay, what's next? Um, town vehicles, um, I had said a few board meetings ago that I would go through the inspections on, uh, town vehicles and prioritize what needed to be done. And unfortunately, things have been so crazy with everything going on, I haven't got that done. But I do have a request from Tay to do the repairs that are necessary on the little Mazda and get it licensed and insured, so she can use it to haul the lawnmower around and do her running around around town. I spoke with Eric. He believes that it's a viable vehicle to do that. Um, it would need tires and a little bit of brake work to be safe to operate on the road, and then we'd have to get it licensed and insured. Um, I would like to see us do that. It, it's if it, if Eric thinks it's a viable vehicle to be able to do that with it and use less gas than anything else we have, uh, it is handy. It sits lower to the ground for lifting things in and out. Um, I think it's something that we ought to consider.
Okay, let's put it on our next agenda. Or do we want, would you prefer we take action now, and can we legally take action?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, so yes, we can.
Okay, during an, an update. Okay, great. I move that we proceed with that whoop-de-doo that ever is needed on that, uh, little cute little truck.
Okay, Sasha?
Um, I don't know if we need a second before there's discussion.
Okay.
If I can just say what I wanna say.
Go ahead.
I would just like to see the full list um, before we make a decision on prioritizing, please.
Okay, I, I emailed it out, what, a month and a half ago or so, but I can dig it up and email it again.
I would appreciate it. I've had, I've finally signed into my town email correctly on my own computer, so I'm getting emails and all of that. Um, so I would appreciate that. I'm sorry I didn't get it before.
All right, Chris?
And also with that, I'd like to see an estimate of the cost of repairs of labor and parts before we decide to pull the trigger on putting money into this truck to see if it's worthwhile.
All right.
No problem with that.
My, what I was gonna suggest, and I think it'd probably be about the cheapest way to do it. My, what I was gonna suggest, and I think it'd probably be about the cheapest way to do it, would be to go to Walmart and buy a set of tires for it, or maybe one get get some off the internet or whatever. Um, as far as the repairs, the the repairs to the brakes and stuff, I can sure get a an estimate and if you think I need to, I can get two or three of them. Um.
I just wanna see, I don't, I mean, I don't necessarily care about multiple vendors. Maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea, but I just wanna see if the cost of the repairs is viable for the truck itself.
Okay. I can, I can get that.
Cause we were talking, you know, that that I remember a couple of months ago, we were just thinking about getting rid of the damn thing, so.
I I know and um Tay requested that that we do this and I think after talking to Eric that it's viable, so.
Okay.
Um, I'll I'll get that estimate for you. Um, I'll price some tires. Um, we'll check them out online and and maybe go to Walmart and get a couple of prices and we'll revisit it at the next meeting. Although we do have a motion on the table. Do you wanna rescind that motion or do we wanna go ahead and proceed with it?
Rescind it.
Who?
That's up to you, Marty.
Yeah, Marty.
Oh, I think I may, am I back now?
Yeah.
Okay, I I just keep, my thumb has a mind of its own. Uh, and yeah, I'll just withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Or amend it to include no action be taken until we reevaluate.
Just rescind it, just rescind it.
Huh?
Just, just take it back.
Okay, I did that.
Put it back in your pocket.
I love it when, I love being told by you.
All right, guys, I gotta get going here in a second. I gotta go and lock the car on top of Winnebago Pass.
Okay, we're just about done. Um, I believe Tay had to to leave us. Um, she had a something going on. She had to leave the meeting and the last thing is is her report. Um, so I'll give a quick overview. Um, she's done a little work on the town computer and hopefully she got some stuff straightened out over the weekend. Um, we, I've asked her to do the um drywall work in the town hall, which I believe is would be under her job description. Um, we got the the estimate to to SARS, but I think where we have someone already employed that's capable of doing that, that's the most prospective way to do it. Um, so she'll be starting on that here shortly. Um, her and I are working on getting a an estimate together to order some road signs and barricades and stuff. We hopefully will have that together to present at the next board meeting. Um, I haven't talked to her yet, but I I plan on tomorrow morning asking her to finish cleaning up the tree mess that the the guy guys made that took the tree down. Um, we've got some wood there to haul off and stuff like that. We'll get that taken care of. Um, I believe Niall's been doing a little road work. Um, that's about all I got right now.
Yeah, I have a a on the road and bridge thing. Um, I have tried various ways and have not had much luck with getting a hold of uh Fabian's daughter, Deb Ruzabek. Um, if anyone can figure out a way to contact her and get her permission to haul a block of suitable granite over to that uh gap in the fence, between the fence and the bridge, I'd like to see that proceed. Uh, and remind whoever goes into the town shop to please close the door. One of the large doors has been open for a couple of days now. And I didn't check. I forgive me for that, whether someone was actually in there. But the same door was open the same amount for a couple of days and I think we need to be, if any one of us sees it, we all have the combination to the lockbox. Please make sure that that la- that that building is secured.
That's something else I need to touch base with Tay about. I'll do that tomorrow. I I believe we need to figure out a different latch for the inside of those big doors, cause I think what's happening is when the wind blows, it it comes unlatched and opens itself. I've I've stopped several times and and closed it. Maybe we just need a longer two-by-four in it. I I don't know, but I think we need to look into that and get it taken care of.
Yeah, just put a log, longer two-by-four in there. It's, you know, that's a a fairly effective way. But uh, I just think we should try as much as possible to stay on top of that. We have valuable stuff and at some point in the near future, let us once again access the never-ending project that is known as our town's historic caboose, which is now stretching into potentially the next millennia.
Well, there is good news on the caboose. Have you been in the town shop lately?
No, I haven't.
They've got the body set back on the frame. It's on wheels, um, the suspension's together. They've they've made some significant progress. And I am writing their butts constantly to keep going on it.
Thank you. I, you know, it's 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 time. We've we've waited patiently.
Well, if you get a chance, stop by and take a look at it and see the progress that they made. Frank, did you have some?
Yeah, I just wanna uh help out uh Marty here, but uh the county office base, we've been in touch uh with the uh the owner of the granite, uh Fabian's daughter. We've been touching her lately. She's really tough to get a hold of.
Yep.
But I will talk to Matha, our open space employee, and see what kind of contacts she has and uh and see if we can get a hold of her and ask her about the granite thing.
That's great.
So I'll follow up. Uh, I will follow up on that and we'll see.
Yeah.
See what happens.
And she likes us because we took care of that mill, the graffiti on the mill with uh, you know, the paint companies help, so I think that that we have a salutary relationship with her. Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll try to get something done this week to find out. If I can get a hold of her, I'll I'll get a hold of her and ask her.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll see what happens.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, that's the end of the agenda.
Move to approve the minutes of July thirteenth.
It's already done.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Yeah.
Move to adjourn.
Wait, wait, Sam.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Frank. Go ahead, Frank.
Okay, thi- thi- this is not a complaint at all, but I just wanna, it's it's fact. I received no emails about this meeting at all uh until I had like little after seven o'clock, something showed up in my AOL mail and the it was the agenda for the uh meeting and the uh link to the Zoom meeting did not work. So uh somehow things just didn't work out with that, so I just wanna let a- anyone who has anything to do with it to know that. So that's why I was late to the meeting. Um, so gave some information to work with. Thank you.
Okay, we'll see if we can get that problem figured out and hopefully it won't happen again.
Sam, that's what we were talking about when you dialed in. Um, I didn't receive those either. They went to the Chromebook email instead of our private ones and um I didn't get him and Chris also, I think, said he didn't get notification. So um Tay knows about it and is working on it.
And I will try to log into my email a little bit later. Um, when I first tried, when she handed out the Google Chromebook, so that's not long ago it was. It wasn't working, but it, the password may be fixed now. I'll give it a shot tonight whenever I get back.
All right.
Mine was working. I just didn't get the email. I only got the thank you, Tammy, from Sarah. And so um I responded, I think we need to talk about real briefly here. Um, these things still using both the the Chromebook email and our own emails for at least two more weeks until we get the Chromebooks completely squared away.
I would agree. We need to cover the bases. I I would like to work towards this all using the town emails as soon as possible, but I do realize we can't do that until we get the bugs worked out of it and and everybody's getting all of their emails, so um Tammy, could you start sending things to both personal emails and the town email so we can work on getting this straightened out?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, Tammy.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tammy.
Very good.
You're welcome. Sorry, Frank.
That's not you, Tammy.
Right.
I had nothing but problems with email and when the emails started working, the internet went out. Um, I do not have a Chrome. I had a Chrome Google connection to my lap to from my laptop to my desktop at work. So I was set up to do anything I could do from that computer on my laptop from home and I have lost that connection as well. So I apologize.
Yeah, well, I think we're all kinda in the same boat, Tammy. The internet for the last couple of weeks has just been crazy as far as on and off and whatever, so don't take anything personal.
No.
No, it's okay. It's just very confusing trying to make sure everybody got what they need.
On the bright side, has anybody noticed that the new Verizon tower is up and working? I've got four bars on my phone for the first time since I've been here.
It's actually screwed up my service, I think, because now because now I I have, and it hasn't happened before, now there's a lot of, you know, cutting in and out and it keeps telling me I have an invalid SIM card and my flip phone doesn't have a fucking SIM card. So it's now embarking on a trip of its own. It is severing its ties with me from a working standpoint.
Well, I have some tin cans and a lot of string, Marty. You know, we could just uh.
Well, if there wasn't a fire ban, we could use smoke signals.
Right, yeah.
Not to interrupt, but can can we end? I have to put my kids in bed.
Yeah, I gotta go, guys. So you guys have a good night. I gotta fly. I gotta get to the top of Winnebago.
Okay.
Good luck, Chris.
Jump into a bear.
Last time was a blind line, but you know, it's all good. Have a good night, guys.
Good night, Chris. Thanks.
Bye.
Okay, now can I move to adjourn?
Can I add one really, really quick thing?
Sure.
In reference to Sarah and Marty's um email contact thing, um Lisa brought up, there's a thing called MailChimp that we should possibly look into, that it does mailing groups and handles things super well.
Snail mail or virtual mail, which requires a level of competency that some of us may not be, have yet achieved in this lifetime.
Look into it. I was thinking for like Tay to look into it.
I use it very consistently and am more than happy to help Tammy use it. We do apply for their free service as the town.
Cool, that's all.
So is is that a a mail ma- a snail mail or a virtual mail?
Email.
It's another, yet another electronic intrusion into my already overloaded synaptic dysfunction. Okay.
Just like lightning.
Oh, God.
Okay.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi, whoa.
Let's get out of here.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank everyone.
Thanks.
Tay, are you there?